Nama sering kita bicara hari ini akan dimoderasi oleh para pembicara dan sesi pertama hari ini adalah Dr. Ria May Borromejo Dia adalah profesor asisten dan direktur di Sekesatatan Informasi dan Teknologi Komunikasi Dalam Sekesatatan Universitas Open University Mari kita selamatkan moderator kami dan dia juga akan mengajari para pembicara hari ini mari kita selamatkan dia dengan emoji klap dan Dr. Ria May Borromejo
Selamat pagi it's an honor to be speaking again to you all today I will like to share offline technologies for remote teaching and learning along with some of my colleagues from the UP Open University so I will start by sharing my screen oke I hope you can see it now can you see it properly? oke so my colleagues who will speak with me later are Mr. Ruel Cantada and Mr. Peter Stayout we will talk about the following we have 10 topics to talk about I will cover the first 3 I will cover of an introduction to offline learning and offline access to an online class and then offline version of an online class and then the rest of this 4-7 will be discussed by Mr. Ruel Cantada and then 8-10 will be discussed by Peter let me now start with the offline learning oke so since we have lots of topics to cover I will be really quick offline learning is learning without the use of the internet so it doesn't mean that you're not using any technology or electronic device but this is just, this just means that there is no internet you can have a local network connection that can also, that can still be considered offline learning but you don't have access to the world wide web um, you can do it several there are many, many ways to go on about the offline learning but the using technologies, computers or tablets and smartphones make it easier I will focus in this talk, I will focus on the use of some applications in the computer and smartphone to facilitate online, offline learning so first, I will talk about the offline access to an online class if you were with, with us in the, in one of the previous sessions we talked about Moodle Moodle is a learning management system that you can use to facilitate your classes and Moodle has a mobile version and a desktop version wherein if you download these, these applications in your computer or in your mobile phone you will be able to download the entire course package and access them offline in your desktop or mobile application so this is a sample screenshot of the Moodle mobile you can just download it from the Play Store or the Apple Store and just type in your, the URL for your Moodle site and you are able to browse content of your courses even when offline, upload images you can attempt quizzes when you're online but not when offline but you can post in forums when you are, even when you are offline and then you can also view your course grades this is just a view of the Moodle mobile site and this is a sample course for Principles of Programming course, this is what I can see from my mobile phone so that's, that's basic for Moodle mobile and the really good thing is the offline access now, the Moodle desktop is for me, it's easier to learn when you're using the computer rather than the mobile phone because of the screen size so maybe your students or you share the same sentiment so a Moodle desktop version is also available if you want a bigger screen and you can download this, it's downloadable, it's free for any, any operating system just go to download.moodle.org/d最top and you can just download it I will show a demonstration of, of a Moodle, Moodle desktop so that you can check it out for example, example I have this Moodle course site and these are the contents, I have some forums, a PDF file, the schedule is here and there's a quiz, assignment, programming exercises, and a course completion survey I can all access this online using the website so if I want to check the assignment, I can submit here but what I really want to demonstrate is accessing this using the Moodle desktop app so to do that, I open my Moodle desktop app and I'm going to connect to the Moodle demo that XYZ login and from the Moodle desktop app, this is what I can see I was browsing the course com.sib Principles of Programming and from here, I can see the announcements, questions, forums and the schedule here, the quizzes, requirements, programming exercises, and the course completion survey now what's interesting here is that you can click this, show download options, and you can see those cloud there and you will have the option to download all the sections so there now you're downloading the resources in this course and the cloud means that you have already downloaded it so we see here that we are not able to download the quiz because you cannot take quizzes offline but you were able to download the assignment, the programming exercises, the course completion survey we are also not able to download YouTube links um, because you have to have internet to access that anyway, so I'll turn my wifi off for a while so that we can test this now my wifi is off and let's see the questions forum so there's this thread and I will just try to reply really? isn't? okay, I'll post this and it says that it has offline data to be synchronized because we're not online and it's not yet sent, but later on when we connect again, this will be synchronized so you can post to forums even though you're offline you can view the course guide by clicking this, open the file it takes a bit of time depending on your computer, my computer is a bit slow okay, so here is the course guide that I opened let's go back to the Moodle desktop app we can also submit an assignment offline for instance, this and then save and then it will be submitted when we go online we can also take the course completion survey did you enjoy this course? yes save, okay this, let's see now it's not gonna load because we're offline but anyway, we saw, you saw that we are able to complete some of the activities while we are offline using the Moodle desktop app now I'm gonna go online I'm now back online and let's revisit the forums see if it has already synchronized still waiting a bit for my connection to go back there, um, my post was already sent because I'm already online how about my assignment? okay, so my assignment has already been submitted when I went online so that is the Moodle desktop app so, sorry if you are using Moodle as your learning management system you can definitely use Moodle desktop or Moodle mobile to access your online classroom offline note that you should verify with your administrator that access to Moodle desktop or Moodle mobile is enabled in your Moodle instance for exam if we, um, now let's go back again to our online classroom if we examine it, we can see that there are some different contents such as forums, files, or lecture notes we have quizzes, assignments, and lecture videos and we can categorize these contents into two, the non-interactive content and the interactive content so the non-interactive content are the files, just files that you can store or upload in your online classroom and these are easy to distribute even when offline you can simply put this in USB drives and distribute it to your students but what is quite difficult to, to try to do offline are the interactive content because how would you do forums, assignments, quizzes or any other form of interaction when you are offline? sure you can do this with a Moodle mobile or Moodle desktop app but in other cases, if you're not using Moodle, then this is quite the challenge you can, we can think of many things, many ways how to implement this for example, you can try text messaging for interaction or just doing the regular mail or snail mail but for the quizzes, we can try to do that using eBooks, inter, or interactive eBooks I've tried this application, it's called Cotoby and it allows you to create interactive eBooks in any format I usually, I did this, I exported my eBook to Epub which is very portable and you can access it in, in your mobile phone or it also in your computer and Cotoby is an authoring tool that allows you to create eBooks and, and distribute these eBooks to your students or your peers uh, this is the interface of Cotoby, actually this is free there is a paid version and a free version the free version allows you already to, to create an eBook and export it and this is the interface, it, I think, I think it looks very user-friendly and the interface is just like writing some, writing in some blog or email so you can just try to download this if you want to create eBooks and it will be really user-friendly I'll just show you quickly a demonstration of what I did for my com.sib class using Cotoby tried to convert my online classroom for com.sib Principles of Programming into an eBook using Cotoby Author so I have this just typed in my course guide here and then pasted the programming exercises here gave the instructions to the assignment here and created a quiz now this is what I really like here, you can make interactive quizzes in the eBook and you can also embed, embed some videos so after that, I exported this as an Epub file and then after exporting it, I have my eBook which I will show you so this is my eBook of the, my entire com.sib Principles of Programming course it's not very nice looking at the moment but you can really improve it and add all your materials here using the Cotoby app so I have my schedule, everything else, assignments and this is the quiz, if I try to answer it I can get the score there you can just improve the layout later on but the idea is that you can create interactive quizzes here and you can add some of the interactivity that you want in your class in this eBook which you can easily distribute tried to, tried to sorry okay, so um, that's my short talk of demonstrating offline access to an online class and offline version of an online class and next, we will have Mr. Ruel Cantada discuss more offline technologies for, for remote learning I'll stop my share and give the floor to Mr. Ruel Cantada thanks for listening, we'll be back, I'll be back later to, for the question and answer
I'm Ruel Cantada, an assistant professor at the Faculty of Education, UP Open University I teach distance education courses and do research in open educational technologies for open and distance learning so the issue we face in this discussion is how to teach and learn remotely if our internet connection is poor and, or unstable that issue is sometimes reformulated by educational institutions as a problem of delivering content or delivering online course, courses uh, this may be the perspective of initiatives to deliver a courseware using on-the-go USB technology if you're not familiar with OTG, here's an example of an on-the-go USB drive one end is uh for micro USB to be attached to a phone or tablet, okay? and then the other end is for regular USB in the computer called Type A or you could have an adapter and then just plug in a regular USB so that you can plug it in a, um, mobile device, okay? so, the principles and issues of this approach is not new this returns to the distribution of courseware like this in CD-ROM or DVD-ROM the only difference is the provision of, for compatibility with modern mobile devices and the larger capacity of flash drives this 64GB OTG drive costs 535 pesos online okay, so, one of the issues with this computer-based instruction is that it has a one-way communication what happens with student, student assessment? or what if there are updates in the content? or what about teacher-student interaction? or student-to-student interaction? in other words, how can we create a learning environment and not just deliver content? do we physically collect the drives house by house? or buy new drives for distribution? imagine as well if you have distributed a thousand drives and need to update them en masse? it is probably the reason why these solutions is paired with, are paired with some funding support for internet access but that then goes back to the problem of internet connection so one possible solution is to build your own learning community network a concept developed by NASA wherein there is intermittent connectivity and all nodes are moving is the concept of disruption tolerant networks, or DTN so though, the concepts would be, aside from intermittent connectivity is the, uh concept of, underlying concepts of this, uh, network networking cons, uh, idea is opportunistic contacts and store and forward opportunistic contacts means that you connect to the network when there is an opportunity to contact another node which is moving and then what happens is you store and then you forward the data while there is connection, okay? now, a, a, I'll win, uh, some bull blog about their project to create a MOOC on entrepreneurship for the competency project targeting fishermen in the remote islands of northern uh, or North Sulawesi in Indonesia now this is a good example of, a good example of the application of disruptive tolerant networking or network in a problem with remote islands so you can see here and, and this case is of particular value to the Philippines because we have very similar archipelagic geographic conditions in the country so what they have here is that uh, connectivity in remote islands would only be established between, uh, they're actually using Moodle Box to deliver the MOOC uh, so the updates will only happen, updates and syncing with another, uh, equipment where either through Sneakernet or somebody would bring, uh, a, a device to sync with a, with the remote offline device or through vehicles or even through passing ships or ships that visit, visit the, the island, okay? so you can see here, the design how a student in the island is able to store and forward data to and fro ships that are passing and then later on, when the ships reach the main islands they, then it syncs to the internet so that the teacher can look at the data, okay? so there's a lot to learn from, uh, their experience in Northern Sulawesi so I'm not going to talk deeply about, uh the technicalities of DTN, uh of the bundle protocol and, and etcetera I leave it to you to, I'm only going to introduce the concept and leave it to you to study it further now of course, with these electronic equipments, the network equipment don't take care of themselves, okay? especially in calamity conditions who will take care of the equipment? who will dust off ash fall for instance after a volcano, volcanic eruption? or replace broken equipment or upgrade firmware and so on? so we introduced the concept of digital stewardship according to Blumenthal and others digital stewardship is the active and long-term management of digital objects towards their preservation for unencumbered access by future generations so in some projects in in some projects in New York, Red Hook, New York and then in Detroit what they did was they recruited volunteers, young people in a digital stewardship program and those, on those people, local community members were the ones who actually set up and maintain the community network uh, usually it's a community wireless network or it's a mesh network uh, composed of routers or, and sometimes connected by a long-range, uh um, equipment like those Ubiquiti, uh, radio, etcetera if it's going to be kilometers, uh, distance, distances between nodes, okay? so again, I'm not going to go into detail I'm not going to discuss that, the technicalities of building a community network I'm only saying is that it has been done in other countries and, uh, it, not only are equipment required you also need to mobilize and organize community the community so that they will, for one, uh host the placing of and powering of devices because you need to put them in particular locations, high, high areas within the community and also to maintain those equipment now there is a there's a free eBook on wireless networking in the developing world and if you want to study this idea further so it says here that the purpose of this book is to help you build affordable communication technology in your local community by making the best use of whatever resources are available so I leave it to you to, uh, download and read about, read on that now so once you have a community wireless network or mesh network what do you do then? so if you have that, you can then plug in your offline servers like Moodle Box uh, which I'm going to demo, and Calibri or use these to create your network so how can we deliver our courses without internet connection? do you have a group of students who live close together? even if those students are not in the same class or grade level? you may want to try Moodle Box what is Moodle Box? so, uh, you can find the, their website, website at moodlebox.net Moodle Box is a Moodle, the open source LMS in a Raspberry Pi computer now what they, what they offer is a, this image which you can download and that this image has the latest version of Moodle which is 3.9 so after you have downloaded that image, uh, they recommend to use Balena Etcher to, um, flash the image on a 32GB micro SD, okay, so after downloading the image, you get one of these and then, can you see that? then you flash the, this image in here and this goes into the Raspberry Pi, okay? so now you need a Raspberry Pi this is a Raspberry Pi Model 3B which is already running, uh, Moodle Box, okay? so it's, it's that small, okay? so aside from the Raspberry Pi you will also need a power adapter and that's basically, uh all you need to make the Moodle Box server or, uh, you can also run it on battery hookup to a solar panel because it's low-powered according to this website, it's estimated that this model of Raspberry Pi Model 3B uh Model three B uh is, is estimated to consume three point seven watts of electricity. And that's uh uh two thousand six hundred sixty-four watts per month or two point six six four kilowatt per month. And from that you can determine how uh cheap uh it costs if uh you are using uh paid electricity or it would be uh free except for the cost of the equipment if you're using solar. So uh the Pi has a built-in Wi-Fi that can serve as a hotspot for wireless local area network. This allows for multi-way communication between students and teachers, albeit asynchronous. The range of the dub- uh the uh W LAN uh is at least one house away or maybe ten meters or more depending on if there are obstructions or uh other things in the way of the signal. You can use extenders to increase this range while trading off latency. Now, conco- concurrent users that can connect to the server according to uh number of people who have used this is about ten or to forty students depending on whether one is serving video or text. But if one uses the Moodle desktop or mobile app um then students do not need to be connected to the server all the time to work on their courses. Students could just connect to uh sync or download content, then work on it offline. Then they can reconnect to resync or upload their discussion posts, assignments, quiz answers, et cetera to the server later on. So if the open distance e-learning providers create a schedule of syncing similar to Class R's, then uh more students can be served by the Moodle Box. If you have ten students uh sync content in an hour, for eight hours you can serve eighty different students. In addition, activities need to be designed as asynchronous activities. So how much does this cost? Uh in uh the uh Raspberry Pi that I got was from twenty eighteen and the twenty eighteen price for the Pi and other things that are needed to protect it, to clear, to us heat sink, et cetera, and the power supply is three thousand five hundred sixty-nine pesos back in twenty eighteen. Now, uh when I look at the online sellers, that amount is not so far even with the Raspberry Pi uh for one gig, two gig. But if you uh buy the Raspberry Pi uh for eight gig, then you would have to double that amount. That's still cheap. Uh now the Pi three has only one gig. Okay, so it he- can serve less students than the probably the R Pi four with eight gigabytes that is currently available now in the market. Now, these are retail prices, so if you buy them in bulk then uh or if you buy them in wholesale, you'll probably get it for less. So if you divide the cost uh for ten, ten students, for instance, that's uh three hundred fifty-six point nine pesos per student. I think that's uh probably competitive with distribution of an O T G on-the-go U S B courseware uh to individual students. Note though that in the long run, the fixed cost will go lower and lower as more students use the server for let's say uh three uh to five years. So here is Moodle Box access from about uh browser. It's an ordinary Moodle installation with uh except that it has a da- uh dashboard for uh controlling the Moodle Box. Including shutting it down or restarting. Uh next, I will show you you how to access the Moodle Box from the Moodle mobile app in a tablet.
Okay, what I'm going to demo is the Moodle mobile app access to Moodle Box and uh how we can take a an offline quiz with the uh Moodle Box course site. Okay, so first we will turn on Wi-Fi and shows that we are connected to the Moodle Box. Okay, and then we open Moodle. So I'm using an Android tablet here. Okay, so it's loading now. So with the, the Moodle mobile app, you can download entire courses or within a course site. This is digital literacy that I have taken uh from the Moodle Net archives. It's a uh, it's a course demonstrating the Mo- Moodle mobile app uh features. Okay. So within the course site, you can download individual courses. And if you want to re- refresh the course or resync, you can either click on refresh course or you can simply pull down the course page. Okay, so it's syncing now with Moodle Box. So this way you don't have to be uh connected all the time to Moodle, to the Moodle Box and you can uh increase the number of people who can access the uh server instead of having them all simultaneously connected to it. I think the limit is forty, so forty or or less than that depending on what you're serving. So here, let's take this fun quiz. But before we do so, we are going to do this uh go offline, disable Wi-Fi. Okay. So my Wi-Fi is now disabled, but I, I, as, as can be seen here, I can still take the quiz. Okay. Seems I need to access the quiz again so that it will sync. Okay, so let's try this again. Okay. Disable Wi-Fi and then you now attempt the quiz. Okay, we'll just put whatever answer we have find, just so we can fill up fields and uh submit. Click next. And we can then submit all and finish even if we are offline. However, the answers are not yet in the server, so it says here this quiz has offline data to be synchronized. So what happens is later on, when you have uh a net connection, you can now reconnect to the server. Okay. And then what you do is you simply resync your Moodle mobile app to the Moodle uh server. So what will happen is we will see that the Moodle server in Moodle Box will then mark the auto graded quiz. And if we go back to uh the desktop, for instance, using a teacher account, you'd be able to see the results of the students' uh attempt. And you can see here that the server had already uh marked the quiz. So when we create when we create courses, we will have to take into consideration in the design of our courses, if we are going to use it in an offline uh Moodle Box. Uh particularly is that we cannot use external data. We should design it modularly. Uh because if you use, let's say for instance, uh if you use a link like this, this digital activities from the UK Open University, this is an external ra- link because the box is offline. Even if we try to connect to that using let's say Chrome, you're not going to get anything. Okay. For, for not found. The same with embedded YouTube videos, et cetera. So when we design for the Moodle Box, everything has to be in the server modularly.
Okay, so another uh um offline uh server that can be used for uh teaching is uh Colibri from Learning Equality. So Colibri has uh three components. You have the Colibri Studio which is in uh uh a server, an online server that uh is more or less a repository of curated content. And I'll show you uh some of this content later on. And then you have an online Colibri that doesn't have to be installed in uh in a, in in Raspberry Pi. It could be in a regular computer. What happens is that uh from Colibri Studio, the uh online Colibri is uh is seeded with online content. And then uh the uh online Colibri can export to a U S B file the updated content. Then physically it is taken, called a Sneakernet by someone to the uh offline Colibri in the remote location. Where the students can similarly with um the uh Moodle Box can access through wireless uh local area network using mobile devices, mo- using uh computers and so on and so forth. Okay. So uh Colibri is free and open source and it can be download- downloaded from learningequality.org. Okay. So uh if you want to install it in a Raspberry Pi, eh you can download an image or you can download it uh eh or you can download an installer for a Windows computer or a Linux computer. So this is the Colibri Studio, but I'm not going to show tha- that this is where uh content creators, institutions can upload content so that it can be distributed to uh Colibri, offline Colibri uh devices. So you can see here how the Colibri reached the disconnected. And these are some of their, uh they call them channels, uh content. This is my Colibri hardware setup. What I did was I created this ghetto looking rig because uh unlike uh the example Moodle Box before, I need a large I need an external hard drive right there. There's the Raspberry Pi. So I need an external hard drive to uh to store the hundreds of gig of content coming from Colibri Studio. I've also added a uh a desktop switch so that if I want to separate the uh storage or the database from the server or connect uh client uh computers via wire, that could also be done. However, this Colibri will be connected to the existing wire uh Wi-Fi that we have here at home. Okay, so here we are in Colibri. This is the administrator's uh page where you can import from uh Colibri Studio different content from different channels. Each of these channel is provided by uh different institutions than uh Colibri. Um for instance, you have osmosis, C K twelve. Uh then you have of interest here and very timely is the Stanford Digital Medical Coronavirus Toolkit. We can take a look at that later on. Then you have the F E T uh simulations and Khan Academy. You can see in the Khan Academy uh content that I have managed to download so far is six gig, but it could be uh larger. Okay, so if we take a look at the learner's uh view or page, uh when uh the student will see the channels and can decide on which uh content he or she would like to uh study. So for instance, the Stanford Medical Coronavirus Toolkit contains various uh content. Let's take a look at hand washing. So most uh the uh design of a Colibri uh learning object or a learning course is uh based on videos. Then probably there will be, you can actually create quizzes uh for videos, but discussion uh boards are, I don't think they, it's part of the design. So it's mostly like that, videos, then questions or quizzes, et cetera. So this is served by a Raspberry Pi three, as you can see. It's functional. Let's take a look at Khan Academy. Okay, um let's say uh integral calculus, differential equations, you can see here.
Let's now introduce ourselves to the idea of a differential
So the reason why it's able to serve these uh videos
for modeling and stimulating phenomenon, understanding how they operate.
And we'll get into that later. To be optimized for computing devices like To optimize for computing devices like Raspberry Pi.
I'm Raul Cantada and this is Hello? Okay. Thank you so much to Sir Ruel for sharing the technologies that he tried out himself, that we also use for our for our respective locations. I haven't tried these things yet, but uh they're very interesting and I hope this are useful to all of you. Now, I learned something from another uh aside from the Colibri and the Moodle box, I learned something from Sir Ruel um about the Moodle mobile or the Moodle desktop app. I said earlier that you cannot try out quizzes when you um offline. So actually, I didn't know that you could actually do quizzes offline, but you have to attempt it first online so that it will be saved offline. So if you just download all course contents and then go offline, um when you try the quiz, you won't be able to access it. But if you specifically go to the quiz and then attempt it while you're online and then you go offline, you can later come back to it. So that's a clarification about Moodle desktop or Moodle mobile app. Okay, so I hope that's clear and sorry for the confusion earlier. Next, um we have three more topics and this will be um we are fortunate to have Peter to discuss the UP about the UPOU Maker Space, Futures of Distance Learning and Micro Platform Development for Distance Learning. Peter is one of our lecturers in the UP Open University. Uh actually, he's an artist who uses advanced computational methods to create interactive artworks and performances. He gets his kicks out of collaborations and building and hacking stuff. As one of SEED's co-founders, Peter worked on an extensive range of bio mod and seeker projects in the US and Europe. He spearheads the development of tools and platforms to support the global SEED community. Most of his artistic and scientific activities are data driven and deal with exploring digital life forms. So now I will have to um give the floor to Peter to discuss the remaining topics of this session. Thanks.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me? I guess yes, I see Ria nodding. Um if all goes well, you should see my screen and presentation as well. Ria, can you confirm that? Alright, great. So good morning, everyone. Uh my name is indeed Peter. I am a visiting lecturer here at UPOU and I work as an artist and a designer on a range of UPOU activities, um some of which I will be talking today here. So I'm looking forward to your responses to the projects that we are currently undertaking, especially since we have an audience of educators and specialists. So I'm representing here not only UPOU but also SEED, which is a partner of UPOU. And SEED stands for Space Ecology, Art and Design. We are a transdisciplinary collective of artists and scientists and engineers and activists. And uh our members come from all over the world, including quite a few here from the Philippines as well. Um we are most known for our art projects. Um we focus on questioning um existing ideas uh about future and we make community engaged, uh co-created and bottom up design art pieces. However, over the course of this last decade, we've also been expanding our range of projects into contributing to academical um research, education as well as design. So we focus on community aspects, including community art, and we've worked together with over a thousand people in the past. And being um a distributed network um of artists and scientists, we have to work across different time zones, uh which is challenging, so we have to come up with these remote solutions. Um in order, we we use a wide range of tools to accomplish this, but also after a while, um we started with the creation of our own uh platform. A platform to communicate to the outside world about our activities, but also a platform with tools for uh an internal organization and collaboration. Since we are hackers and artists, we uh we we deal with hands-on experimentation. So we started building this from scratch ourselves and we're still in uh in the development of that uh of that same platform. We built um quite an advanced technology stack that implements both real-time communication uh but also has already support for asynchronous activities and a continuous development. We'll come on that back later because it's part of the story that I want to tell today. Um allow me to represent one of our most uh one of our new and most exciting projects, I think, here at UPOU. And it's uh the creation of a Maker Space and a Media Lab at UPOU in the Dileman region of Quezon City. Uh we are creating a space that will bring together various technologies for both our students and wire communities, including uh for example virtual and augmented reality, as well as 3D printing, laser cutting, or human-computer interaction amongst other new and exciting technologies. Um we bring both together um the possibility to experiment with this technology as well as experimentation um and the knowledge to operate and to work with this technology. Furthermore, the lab will be a place for experimental research um and and maybe even a place where we can have residencies for artists, for scientists, or fellow educators. It will be a place where we will spark new collaborations um between the UPOU, its partners, and maybe new and exciting external partners. The space itself is not purely a physical space, but it aims to be a hybrid space bridging the gap between the physical space and also a virtual um a virtual one. And this is a project that is currently in development that will support the projects that I'll be discussing today. Um the space exists already. We are currently developing the space together with um with uh two partners of UPOU. One of the partners is SEED, but the other partner is Curiosity, which is also um as a UPOU partner, which occupies the space right now. And we are currently exploring the possibility of transforming this existing space into a shared space um that could host the Media Lab amongst other activities. Um in the future, this will be a place where we can host workshops, where we can have students work as well. But right now, we are obviously focusing on developing the space um and getting it ready for post-pandemic times. Um some of the projects that we're working on right now amongst the three partners, for example, is a COVID nineteen database for open source solutions. So that's one activity that's already happening right now here in this space. Uh but today I want to highlight one specific project that's uh that will be working on here from within the space as well in regards to offline education and platform development. Um so we talked about Moodle quite a few times today. Uh our two uh my two colleagues has talked about Moodle to quite extent. Um and that is because one of the activities that we do at university obviously is teach. And we use Moodle um for organizing our learning materials and our student organization. Uh in addition to that, we make use of a range of additional technologies, including for example Google Classroom, depending on the subject um or the course that is being taught um in the class. Uh for example, another typical setup of a class could be that the organization uh would happen through my portal, our Moodle, um and for example, a Google site that could host the course materials. However, we found that specific course subjects are in need of very specific functionalities and we were wondering if we could put uh to use our SEED stack of technology, the same um the same uh collection of technology that we use for our own internal organization and experimental tools, if we could modify that to host a platform, a micro-platform uh for educational purposes for specific course content. And we are in luck because we have a direct access to a live setting uh because we are teaching as we speak. So we used one class uh and the students of this class as guinea pigs to start exploring this idea and see how far we could push it. Uh we started with a simple test in the previous term and in the current term, we're doing more extensive tests on this, as I will show you right now. Um so um this is a regular UPOU class with distance learning, however, everything is fully online. And we selected a specific course for these experiments. Um it's an introductory course for programming. And so we were wondering if we could implement a way of interactivity here because what we wanted to achieve, a student could not only observe the knowledge and read about specific subjects regarding uh programming, but also experiment with snippets of code, with small pieces of code, execute them or save them, or be able to to share them amongst each other and modify them. So it goes away from just a passive knowledge learning and it would emphasize also experimentation from within uh from within the students' capacities within uh within one uh place. So we're still using Moodle, for example, for communicating with the students for forums um and overall student organization. But in addition to that, we are mixing it up with a a a platform that we built ourselves uh that serves specific functionality, basically. Um it also has a manual grading uh tool built in. And we're currently exploring, for example, if you can build automatic checkups or um other um analysis of student engagement within the platform. Something exciting that we did um is we're not just building this ourselves. Um we are inviting the students to actively partake in the development and rethinking um this platform itself. So we are asking the students basically to go design, to think with us, to provide us with feedback, or even to come up with their own mockups and wireframes. So this is what we've been doing in this last month. We've had students reflecting on specific subjects um in addition to the actual course content and come up with mockups and wireframes, wireframes themselves. Some examples can be seen here, um which is obviously um an interesting um take for the students because they feel very empowered. There's a sense of ownership. Um and it makes them think about the course, obviously, on a meta level as well because they can expand their functionality by just partaking in questionnaires or um coming up with with their own designs. And that brings me to the final aspect to this presentation. In fact, these experiments are just preliminary research and smaller experiments that could contribute to a bigger experiment that we're taking on within UPOU. And um I'm honored to present today uh our initial ideas around education in a box. Um education in a box is still in an explorative phase together with Dr. Diego Maranan and Dr. Joan Serano. Um and it will be the result of the continuous effort of UPOU to be at the forefront of distance education for a broad audience. In addition to what we're known for, namely online distance education, uh which we're still reimagining all the time, but we're also setting up this new and exciting research project with a working title, "Education in a Box", in order to respond to the need needs of the many communities here in the Philippines or in the region uh where internet activity is either unstable or even unavailable altogether. Given the current reality of the pandemic, physically distant learning for all layers of education will be a reality in the near future or right now. And the challenges that come with that are already vast enough when even internet activity is not an issue. So we are taking upon ourselves to be at the forefront as well, to take up a role in the area for sharing knowledge, hosting activities, um and rethinking how education uh could occur within uh communities and regions where internet connectivity um is unavailable or um or not very well optimized. Um so uh I want to use this opportunity to ask some key questions, which already have been talked about today, but also I want to um maybe there's some some key insights from the audience um on how to deal with this problem. Um how can we combine existing and open technologies, some which are already presented today, for example, like the Moodle box? Or maybe we could put to use blockchain technology in order to tackle this problem? Um how can we design for higher educational needs in these circumstances and strive for excellence at the same time? Because the problem is twofold, right? On one hand, we need to come up with a quick solution uh for the near future. And at the same time, we are interested in exploring possibilities and strategies on um for longer-term solutions as well. So the problem is in that fault, uh it's twofold in that regard. The methods that we're currently applying is we try to conceptualize and explore using both hands-on experimentation and prototyping, as what you've seen in the previous project that uh that I presented. And we want to build prototypes based upon an experimental learning platform and put it to use within UPOU and the BAMS program. Um and we want to bring together both hardware and software in an integrated, affordable and maintainable solution. So some of the current ideas that we're exploring are the unified, the creation of a unified and secure headless content management system or learning management system that could cater towards a vast range of media, basically. Um and the content of these courses should be available regardless of this medium that is being used. And this medium could be, for example, a lightweight operating system uh living on a USB stick, as discussed before, or a microcomputer like a Raspberry Pi connected to either a computer or a television screen. Uh maybe a custom mobile application or tablet device could cater more towards the existing needs as well. Um and the the question is quite challenging because as we discussed here in this series today, as was discussed by my fellow colleagues, um it's not just about passionately engaging with content, but there's also how to um exercise, how to have group discussions, where to find help, how to find help to understand a specific topic, uh how and how do we deal with these? And I think we've seen some interesting um proposals already today. Snail mail or mail or text messaging, or maybe even community mesh networks could be put to use. Uh we need to come up with interesting way of thinking strategies because at some point, the content needs to be delivered, updated, and assignments need to be created. Um and so the medium sometimes has to have access at some points to internet. Um so we're still at the very early stages of this project. Um and and once again, I am looking forward to see if the fellow speakers or members of the audience have any insights uh for us to uh take on these um hands-on experimentation projects that we're doing. Um I want to thank you for this opportunity to present our project today. Um and I'll be taking on questions as well later. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Uh if you guys have any suggestions on the open or answers to the open questions that Peter presented, so remember that we need a quick solution for the near future, but something that's also really feasible and that we can we can all partake in. Um we are now taking your questions, but let me first summarize what we have talked about. Uh now nowadays, one of our problems is how we can facilitate teaching and learning even with limited internet connection or no internet connection at all. We can think of many ways, many, many ways to do this. Of like simple ways from just simply creating nice handouts that you can distribute by snail mail or creating PowerPoint slides, Word documents, PDF files, and these files for your students to be able to study. You can, we can also set up text messaging groups or group calls. We can partner with local radio stations for broadcasting some of our content online. There are really many ways and you know, sky's the limit. We can use our creativity to think of ways to deliver our classes offline. Excuse me. But there are also technologies that we can use and we shared some of the them today. However, these technologies that we shared somehow still still needs internet at some point or even a network because we need that network for the communicate for communication and for and for interaction among students and between the teacher and the students. So even though we try to do things offline, we still need some sort of a network for that interaction factor in our classes. And the solutions, the technical solutions can be simple to technical, like setting up all these Moodle boxes or buying this hardware. But the idea is something can be done. We can do something. We will, even though we have a problem, we can think of solutions for this, be it simple or complicated. But there are solutions to these problems that we are encountering right now. And these are good opportunities for us to innovate our teaching and learning. So that's what I can say about this. And we're now going to try to answer your questions. First, okay, somebody asked here, but I, I was typing an answer, but I said I will answer it live. The question was, if we already have access to Moodle app where there is a feature of quizzes and uploading of files, what would be the difference of using Quotabee? Quotabee is just one way. So you just deliver the content, but you cannot get the answers back as a teacher. So Moodle is the real two-way interaction. Okay, I'll click done. Now, Angel, do you have some questions from other channels? Or should we just proceed to answering the questions in Zoom?
Hello, ma'am. Sigur, we can pick, you know, we can pick three to four questions on Zoom and then we will flash the questions from Facebook.
Okay. Oh, this is very interesting. Maybe Peter or Roel can answer this. For the teachers, or I will try. For the teachers' teaching in a far-flung area, what do you think would be the best LMS to be used in the absence of electricity and internet connectivity? Now, that's a challenge. Well, I, I think, yeah.
Yeah, I think there are multiple problems there. One is electricity. Two is a, they, those are different things. But first, they have to resolve electricity, of course. You use solar most likely. And then you need a server that can be powered by solar and a, a Pi or something else, depending on how much solar power you can or electricity you can generate. So the low computing device would allow for it. And as we have demonstrated, Moodle can run on such low computing device. But there are other open source LMS available.
Yes, thank you for that. Peter, here's a question for you. You were mentioning about COVID-19. What educational content in "Education in a Box" is contemporarily included in this exciting research project that we can all possibly access?
Yeah, I was typing an answer to that, actually. No, it's fine. So the COVID-19 project that we did together with UPU was not really an educational project. So we focus more on technology and people with subjects like PPEs or patient treatment devices and how all of the technologies that we included are from a DIY perspective. So in theory, a lot of these solutions could be, could be made or built by, by any of us, basically, depending on your skill level for a bit. And so it's not really an educational project. That being said, I'll post a link here in the chat if people want to explore it.
Okay. There's a question for me. I can cite some advantages of Quotabee and how we will use it, given we have already a Moodle LMS. Okay, so Quotabee is just an authoring tool. It's just like PowerPoint or Word that allows you to create content in an ebook format and with some interaction. So you can use Moodle and Quotabee hand-in-hand. You can create your ebook and then upload it in Moodle. Or if you don't have your LMS or you can upload it in any LMS or if you don't have any LMS, then you can find ways to distribute the LMS like USB or CDs or something like that. Earlier also, I answered a question, but I typed it. I think this is also important to say live. What if there are no devices for transferring? Now, I said that you can try to do it peer-to-peer. Now, this is where, where helping each other will really work. If I have no USB driver, but I have a phone, then I download the, the content in my phone. Then I can visit someone, meet with someone, even in a, with social distancing, two meters, I can send something via Bluetooth. So that will work. And then that person can then meet with another person and then you can do peer-to-peer distribution of your materials. So it's just really, you can really think of ways to distribute content even with limited devices or access. And it's, we can, we can do this, I think. Okay, let's answer more questions. Is there any specific model of laptop or gadgets which can carry or accommodate all these apps? How about old model gadgets? I, I'm using an old model computer from 2015. So is this old enough? Or if we're talking about older models, I think that as long as the operating system supports it, then you can still use it. Although, of course, it will be a bit slower. But as long as the operating system still support, is still supported, you can use the hard, old hardware.
Yeah, and also, I think, but this is a bit technical. But even with older laptops, what you can do, for example, is to install a more lightweight operating system so that, so that it could still be used, for example, to access current technologies like Moodle. This is only running in the browser or on a, on a lightweight desktop application. It should be available to use it on almost any type of technology, even though it's, it's old. And as we've seen today, the Raspberry Pi, which is like a super, super small computer, it's remarkably powerful to be this small. But basically, if you can run Moodle on such a small computer, you can definitely run it on an older generation laptop as well.
Okay, I'll try to answer more questions from here. Can we upload scanned documents in Quotabee? Yeah. If it's in, what, what do you mean? Like if you're the teacher and then you, if you will publish it? Yes, you can do that. You can add your scanned documents as an image in Quotabee and then publish them as an ebook. What about breach data privacy while sharing offline? How will we handle that? Now, it's up to our design of what we share and the settings that you can... This is a, this is really a challenging question because, like, you really don't know when, when you're sharing them offline. You, you, it's difficult to monitor, like, who is reached and how they are reached, who, who has your data now. So I guess it's with the design of what we are sharing as much as possible. We just try to share data that we can actually share and not some, so let's not share data that we don't have license to share. Yes, that's it. Can I integrate Moodle in Google Classroom? You can add links in Google Classroom to Moodle, but they don't have like a seamless integration, if you mean being logged in to both at the same time or getting answers or get, answering quizzes in Moodle and then saving it in Google Classroom. At the moment, there's not, no such functionality, but you can link one in the other. This is interesting. Well, the old style is creating printed course modules and then sending it to them. And with that, there are also printed quizzes or worksheets that they send back that, that can be done, I think. Or if you partner with some local radio network to broadcast your, your lecture and then the students will listen to that at specific times. Those are my suggestions. Oh, I think the, the, maybe this is not really learning per se, but with the remote teaching, students learn to become more disciplined because the teachers are remote and they have to, to, if they want to be successful or really learn, they should practice self-discipline. And I think that's a good skill to learn early in life. And I hope that our students can now learn it at this time.
Yeah, I think I have a response to this. One interesting thing that we've seen here in the course that I teach, a fellow colleague of mine, he had to teach 200 students at the same time. And he came up with a solution where the students would be automatically put in smaller groups, for example, and come, and talk about each other's work and comment on each other's work as well. So the realities are very different, obviously, as, as sitting face down with your students. However, there are possibilities, I believe, to actively promote student engagement and interaction with each other and as well as interaction, obviously, with the teachers and the teacher's assistants. But it is definitely more challenging.
Yeah, it's natural for the teachers to hope for what they have been used to. However, at this time, it's just that we don't have a choice and we just have to adapt to the situation. The earlier we accept this, maybe the easier it will be for us to, to innovate or try to do something because we need some solutions quickly. And we don't know until when, when we have to, to be in this situation. So I think this is just a time wherein we will just have to do our best with what we have at the moment. Yeah. Let's see. Depends on what. Actually, if we were talking about learners just getting content from, from the teachers, I don't think there is a risk for the learners in terms of data privacy because data privacy refers to like the illegal distribution of protected data. And the learners are not distributing anything at the moment. If you, if the learner will just get the, the materials now, the risk happens when we send our, for example, our worksheets, our assignments, our school materials back to the teachers. And the, probably the, the risk is if your data gets lost in the, in the snail mail or, or get, or your USB gets destroyed, the risk of, of, of reliability on the answers. If your USB gets swapped with another student, I think that's, that's possible as well. But, uh, yeah, like how do you identify? As a teacher, you have to identify the USBs. Where is this coming from? Is this from this student? Or because you want to be able to match the assignments created by students with what you are receiving. So, and the online, that's quite easy. But if you're getting the data from different means, it's quite a challenge.
Just the question of risk. I think if you use offline and offline network, I mean, a private network built with offline technology, the learners are protected from a lot of the things that you find in the internet, porn. Then you have scammers and so forth and so on because the content that can serve to a, a private mesh, a private network can be curated and focused on learning. Yeah, that's all I have to, to add.
Thank you, Dr. Ria Serruel and Sir Peter. That's the last question that we got for this session. We thank our speakers for sharing very relevant and practical tips in our session this morning. And on, on the topic, on our issue or concern related to data privacy, it really also boils down to the, to who will process or who will handle the information to make sure that we are handling the data that we're getting in a way that is safe. All right. So thank you once again for joining us at today's special session on offline technologies for remote teaching and learning with University of the Philippines Open University. This session runs under EduHAC series, under EduHAC series of UPU navigating through a turbulent education landscape. So check, check out their Facebook page for more sessions from UP Open University. Thank you for joining us. We are DICT MC1 World Champion at World Summit on Information Society Prizes 2020 by International Telecommunications. We wish you a safe and blessed week. Please stay negative. Bye.